Call the meeting to order. That's one way to get attorneys to sit down. Roll call, please. Here. 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 Here.
Here.
Here.
Valerie, would you lead us, please? I'll have the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. We thank you for allowing us to be at this meeting. And we ask that you lead us and guide us and direct us. Help us to always do our responsibilities with integrity and professionalism. Teach us to do those things that will be right by all people. We thank you for all things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands here, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. Thank you. This is time for a call to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I have two requests this time. Amy Fuller, our school superintendent, nice to see you. And you brought the second better half, right?
I did. I brought, yeah, my bodyguard is with me today.
Judge, welcome.
Thank you. Honorable Tom Rankin, members of the board, members of the public. Two weeks ago, on Tuesday, was one of the toughest times for Florence Unified School District as we lost our head coach, Coach McCain. I care to thank you, number one, for your support for our kids. You worked with us in the parade and all of the thank you notes and gratitude for our coach and for our kids was incredible from all of you. You have supported us through a lot of things, and I wish everyone was like the town of Florence who have always supported our override and our thing. Today I come to speak to you about the override that is coming up on November 5th. I think all of you have one of those handouts. And it will be a mailing ballot only. Unfortunately, Arizona ranks 48th in education spending per pupil, so the MNO override will compensate for the monies that are not given to us by the state or the federal government. According to our flyer and according to our information, it's about 39 cents per day will eliminate pay-to-participate fees for each sport. It will eliminate fees for full-day kindergarten, which they're now $1,200 per year. It will bring back the full elective programs of PE, music, art, et cetera. It will lower class sizes so that we may have higher academic achievement. And most importantly, it's an investment in our community. It will raise property values, and it will lower crime rate as property values go up in the best schools. So I'm asking for your support, and hopefully we can pass this override for our 8,260 students. Thank you very much.
Dr. Fuller, thank you. And on behalf of me, I can tell you, as Tom Rankin, the individual, not as Tom Rankin, the mayor, but Tom Rankin, the individual, I'm doing everything I can to make sure this bond does pass. I've seen the hardships it's placed on some people here in town through the all-day kindergarten program, through our sports program, through our other programs that sponsor the arts within the school. I take a look at our band and what it was a couple of years ago, but now this has come up, and hopefully the people realize the need for educating these, not only the special activities, but the education aspect of it also. And I wholly endorse the election, and our ballots have already been sent in with yeses. There's about six or seven of them.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Thank you, all of you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. Make a Difference Day is this Saturday, October 26th. Make a Difference Day is the largest national volunteer effort to help others. Each of us has an opportunity to do something for our community. We can each make a positive difference in our own way. We can offer to help a friend or a neighbor. We can sweep the public sidewalk outside the fences surrounding our yards. We can clear away the dry weeds along the street. We can pick up litter on the public easement between the streets and the fences. It takes just a little bit of effort to notice something that needs to get done, and then it takes just a little bit more effort to do it. Choose something that makes a difference to you, knowing that each of our small efforts will make a big difference to our town. This is our chance to make a big difference, so let's go for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruth. Now, I also want to tell you that Make a Difference Day is this Saturday, but I saw you out Saturday doing this, making a difference, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does any other member of the audience have anything they wish to discuss? Seeing none, we'll close call to the public. We're now going to work session on design concept for the park at the Silver King Plaza. Who's going to do this? Mark?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, I would be happy to kick this item off, but I will note right from the get-go that this has definitely been a collaborative effort of multiple departments, not just community development, but also parks and recreation, of course, and public works, administration, economic development. And we're talking about a park, but we're also talking about much more than just a park on this facility. So let me begin the presentation also by extending the recognition and thanks to the Padilla Family Trust for making the land available for the park. We were able to acquire that piece of property, and the WLB group actually donated their services to do the plat that combined that land with the Silver King Marketplace property. Then the Swaback Partners and the London Company came in to help us prepare the design plans for this effort, and the London Company to financially support this effort. And then Harold and Katie Crist actually are willing to donate plans for this facility. So this has really been a very collaborative and fun effort. As you know, we did major work on the restoration of the Silver King Marketplace building, the old Silver King Hotel facility. We've been pretty successful in getting tenants in that building, but not extremely successful in completing off the rest of the package. So behind the property, it's still been an unfinished lot, and then, of course, the Padilla Lot was across the street from that. And recently, we looked at the opportunities for doing more with this property to benefit the town as a whole, but to benefit this property specifically in this area of town and the historic district. So if you look out over this property, you can see the opportunity that lies ahead with this piece of property, a couple other perspectives of the land that's available. And then the location, obviously a great location in the historic district, on the north end of downtown, connecting also to the Territory Square Development, McFarland State Park, and some other key features around this property, also the connection to Heritage So a variety of things led us to the path that we went down on this project of developing a park. But we didn't want to just develop a park with the usual park types of features. It had to be a facility that would be great for gathering, a facility that would be great for benefiting the spaces that we have in the Silver King Marketplace. Number one, so the park, you can kind of break it into a couple of components, and we'll discuss that in the report. Number one, when you come out the back of the hotel, we want that there's an extension of a meeting area and a gathering area that really becomes an extension of the building, ideally restaurants in that space. There's a little bit more of an active area with a splash pad, which has been, a lot of folks have been getting really excited about that. And then the greenbelt area behind that, which can be both an active and a passive gathering space. I'm going to let Jeffrey Denzack is here with Swaback Partners, and in a little bit, I'm going to let him kind of come up and walk you through kind of the design components of the park a little bit more. But that's the park in a nutshell. I want to tell you a couple of other things that would transpire with this project. One, as you can see, the granite road alignment has already been abandoned by the plat that was presented to you a while back, so that road would be scraped up and would no longer exist. We also are looking at the possibility of the angle parking on the streets that are adjacent to the park. Wayne has been out there, and others have been out there, looking at the configuration of that, and if we can get more parking on those roadways, we definitely want to do so. Once again, to benefit the downtown and to benefit the uses of this park. There's a few other things that come into play that you can't necessarily see them transpiring here. You see, as the cost are laid out, there's the landscaping. The next item, signage. We're looking at doing a historic downtown monument sign on the property. It would be at the corner there at Ruggles and Main. It would mirror the sign that's on the other end as you enter into the downtown area. Also, there would be a plaque that would be posted on this property as agreed upon in the transfer of the property from the Padilla Trust to the town. And also, we would be looking at perimeter fencing, probably similar to what you see in that sketch there, where it would be open fencing. It's essentially to create a boundary around the park and to control ingress and egress into the facility. We would be looking at some building and site electrical improvements, namely improvements that would facilitate the use of at least the bottom suites for expanded restaurant potential, and also to utilize a carriage house for bathroom facilities, and also a little bit of storage, and maybe a small counter area that when we have events, people could come up to a counter and get something. That would require some electrical upgrades, and the electrical upgrades would provide additional electricity for the splash pad and the lighting and the other facilities in the park, but would also allow for the suites in this building to convert to individual electrical meters. Having the single meter has been complicated for both the town and for the tenants in the past. So those are some of the other components that aren't necessarily described in detail. After we kind of walk through the design of the park a little bit, we can get into some of the funding and timing scenarios, but I think it'd be a great opportunity if maybe Jeff could kind of come up and add to the discussion. And if you all remember Jeff Denzack from Swaback Partners, he helped us with the framework plan and Territory Square plans. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Mayor, council members, good to see you again. As Mark has said, this has been a wonderful collaborative effort for our office, and certainly we always enjoy coming back to Florence and continuing the effort. I know Mark has talked about some of the details with the plan, but just a few things to think about in terms of park design and so forth. Our office has been fortunate to work on many, many community parks throughout Arizona and the Southwest, and specifically, when we think about park design, it's not only large-scale parks, but sometimes the small park spaces within town centers are just as important as large recreation areas. In this case, Vern Swaback has suggested this is a little jewel within the downtown area, and we think it would have a wonderful impact on the experience. Some of the important things that we've talked about with the group in terms of thinking about design strategies and so forth. Number one is the space has to be inviting. Whatever we design and come up with, at the end of the day, we want it to be inviting for people to come and visit it. And related to that, at the baseline of anything we're thinking about is we want it to be beautiful. And some of the key things related to that is that when thinking about park design, big or small, in this case, obviously, a smaller urban space, it has to work well when there's no one in the space at all. That when people are driving by and it's not being used at the moment, it still wants to be beautiful. Again, it wants to be something that represents the town. And then also, with the examples that we show with some of the imagery, it wants to work well where there might just be a few people in the lawn, enjoying the lawn, and maybe some shade and open space, but also it has to function when there might be a larger gathering. So another one of the key aspects of the design that we've coordinated with the group is that we want it to work well if there's just a few people in the space, but also for larger gatherings. So one of the keys is flexibility, that the way it's been organized in terms of the circulation and the access through the park, and some of the different gathering areas, that it's organized in a way that people can enjoy it in an informal setting, both for small groups and for large groups. So certainly, from Vern Swaback's perspective and from our offices, we applaud Mark and his team and the different departments who've assisted us, and certainly Lynn London and the London family for their efforts, and for Harold and Katie for their commitments to this, because even though it's not a large-scale effort, we understand its importance. And finally, related to Harold and Katie, their commitment of helping out with the landscape, one of the things that we have found in urban open space such as this, the trees and the landscape providing shade certainly in our environment is going to be a major, major key in terms of the quality of space that people can enjoy throughout the year. And of course, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Any member of the council have any questions? Tom?
Yeah, the only couple of questions I have is, number one, I'm all for this project, but one point I have is Ruggles, which I've already mentioned to several people on staff. And Ruggles is a street that should be running from east to west, mainly because of our fire department, because when they go to the west side of town, down to Willow, that is their main run. I think only just switching the direction of those two streets would be an attribute to help our fire department and the traffic. Also, on Ruggles is the only entrance to McFarland Park, and I think they're coming in off of Main. We need to make sure they're straight for that also. Just switch the two streets, that's all. Change them.
Good suggestions.
Yeah, I think it's a really nice project. I'm wondering if you had any contact with, I think, is Gary Bronzo still owns the house that's to the west, and whether you received any input from him and how that would affect his piece of property, his historical site?
Members of the council, what we wanted to do at this stage is just get the general direction of whether we're going to go forward with this concept and this development, and definitely then we would prepare greater level plans and have more discussion, and also bring this to the HDAC and also to the surrounding property owners and kind of fine-tune it. But Gary, in general, is aware of what we wanted to do in the Padilla Trust transfer and the fact that we wanted to do a park, but not the specifics of the park, but we generally want to get the support and direction here tonight if we can.
I think Tommy's correct, because if I look at it, and you have the bandstand down on that corner near his house, I think he would love to see the trees and dirt go away. It'd improve it a lot, but the bandstand being down there by, if I'm reading this right, it'll be down at the corner down there. Is that correct?
There potentially would be a small grandstand, and probably, and what we've pictured is that that is not a permanent grandstand, but that would be a facility that we would, the temporary grandstand that we would bring in if there was a small event. And we wouldn't be looking at doing anything really huge in this park. This is more for intimate events and not, you know, not super late-night events and big things, but...
And then splash pad. What is a splash pad? I think splash pad, I think a kid's going around there splashing water in very shallow water, but I don't think that that's what you mean.
Yeah, that's right there, Tom.
Well, the splash pad is a soft surface area. It's a flat area, and it will have the little nozzles in the ground, typically with some kind of lighting feature, and the plumbing is oriented so that they go off and on. So they splash up, they might splash up all the way, a little way. They are in a lot of the meeting places, so Kirland Commons has a nice little kind of small park area like this that has a splash pad. It becomes a gathering area where the adults can sit around and eat and drink and hang out for a while. The kids can kind of do this and entertain themselves. Also, the Santan Village Mall, Tempe Marketplace, this is a real common feature in a lot of things. And it's in an environment like this, Mayor and council, because, in downtown Gilbert, actually, around the water tank, I forgot, that's one of the best, most equivalent examples around the water tank. They've created an environment where the folks can go to the restaurants around there, but then afterwards, they can hang out with their children, and the children can kind of be amused by the water feature.
Kestrel Grand Movie Theater, they have the frogs that shoot the water out.
It's true.
But it's not for the kids?
Yeah.
To go swimming in?
There's no swimming in the feature, and then...
That's what I meant, yeah. Okay. And looking at this, I would assume that you've already planned the lighting for it, or looking at lighting?
Mayor, members of the council, we know that there definitely will be a lighting plan developed for this property to keep it secure. With that lighting, we also will develop a security plan, so on some of those lights, we will, we probably will have security components. There'll be two types of lighting. There'll be lighting for security, and then there'll also be probably Bollard-style lighting, lower-impact lighting, just to create the ambiance and the environment for the property.
And with that, the police department will be involved with that portion of it?
Absolutely. Everybody's being involved in this project.
And is this, the brown area in there, is that crushed granite, or is that a concrete, or what?
The brown area that you see there is either going to be a dyed or stamped concrete, or potentially some pavers in a certain part of that, depends on cost ultimately.
And our Parks and Recreation have taken a look at it, and when we start talking about the maintenance costs during...
That was one of the factors that came into play right away. We've been working closely with Ray, and we've actually have been working as a team here, and we wanted to minimize certain things, like the amount of granite that was on the property. It might get kicked around and kind of, there is a little bit of concern probably about the amount of turf, so we did try to minimize the turf and create an active turf area and not have turf on the whole property. Ray, perhaps you want to chime in?
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Mark's correct. We tried to minimize the overall increase of our maintenance costs there due to what our current budget is and what we foresee in the future as well. I think we've come up with a pretty decent plan, a mixture and a combination of some turf areas, some hardscape, as Mark mentioned, whether it be pavers or stamped concrete or something, without having to increase the amount of staff we have, increase overall utilities and tools and hardware and such. So we think we're looking at a pretty good plan here, and the benefit, I think, is going to far outweigh the little bit we might spend on it.
Are the green circles, are those trees, or... Okay, thank you.
One of the things that we took into consideration when we were doing the courthouse also was the landscaping around there. We ended up creating a budget for outside services to come in and actually do all of the maintenance on the plants. We have some in-staff people that possibly could have done that, but it just made it a lot easier just to outsource it and pick it up as a package.
Right. Members of the council, that's something I know, we've had some minor unofficial discussions with the manager's office that looking at possibly doing something like that, as opposed to having to add full-time people if the cost isn't too much.
You know, I take a look at the hotel and what it is today and what it was when Katie Montano got a feather and decided to do something about saving that hotel, and the Florence Foundation was formed, and it was because of Katie. It wasn't because of anybody else, but Katie is the one that took the bull by the horns and ran with it. And I take a look at what we have down there now, how this will work with that and make it a nice centerpiece of town. Even though we don't want to be in competition with the courthouse, I think something on this side of town will be very nice, where people from, that live in, that don't live in the main part of town can bring their friends in and come down when we get some shops open and then go shopping if they want to take a little break there. I like the idea. I think it's a great idea. I know that Katie, if she was here, she'd be standing right beside you, yelling for it and screaming, telling us we'd be crazy not to do it. And, you know, and Ophelia and her family, I think that'd be a good, you know, that'd be great for her, because she always loved Florence. She lived here all her life, she really loved it. So I think we ought to tell them, just go ahead and get started on it, get more plans, and let's get it back and get it going. I think that's what the council would like to see. You got your marching order, gentlemen?
Mayor, council, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody from the public have anything they'd like to say on this? Seeing no movement, I will close the work session.
Item 7, adjourn to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities, District Number 2, District Board.
I'll make the motion to adjourn to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities, District Number 2, Board.
Second. We have a motion in second to adjourn to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities, District Number 2. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
7A, public hearing on a feasibility report of the feasibility and benefits of certain projects to be financed with the proceeds and sales of general obligation bonds of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities, District Number 2. Mike, would you like to give an overview?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Pursuant to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities, District Number 2 Development Agreement, Pulte Holmes has requested the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $2 million. Just note that the current bond issue is currently sized at $1,850, but that's subject to change based on the final interest rates on the issue. The bond proceeds will be used to reimburse Pulte for completed construction, including paving, concrete, storm drain, landscaping for portions of Merrill Ranch Parkway and Hunt Highway Phase 1, plus the cost of issuance of the GO bonds. Adopting the resolution, no, I'm sorry. The district, just so you know, is authorized to issue $100 million pursuant to an election held in January of 2006. Currently, the district has issued $4.3 million in general obligation bonds, of which $2.9 or $3 million is still outstanding. This proposed series of not to exceed $2 million will add to that amount. It's expected that total bonds issued, including this issue, will be repaid with the current ad verum tax, so that the property tax rate will not go up, $3.25 per hundred dollars of secondary assessed valuation. Also, just so you know, adopting the resolution will not only approve this issuance of general obligation bonds, but all of the documents, delivery and execution of all the documents that are related to this issuance. Mark Reader from Stifel Nicolaus and Michael Cofiso from Bond Council are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do you remember, have the board have any questions they'd like to ask? I think the only question I have is, you're saying Hunt Highway, and I know this doesn't apply to our bonds people, but what portion of Hunt Highway are we going to work on this time?
It's construction that has already been completed. This is to reimburse Pulte for the construction.
Which part of that? I don't know which one.
Wayne, Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Smith, that portion of Hunt Highway from basically the Franklin Road intersection down to just south of the Community Facilities District Road intersection down to just south of the Community Facilities District, plus there'll be a NESCO amount for completion of the curb when that is finally designed based on allocation right away from other owners.
Okay.
Now, there'll be some exceptions that, such as there'll be bonding for the landscaping in that area, but basically the road is complete.
Driving out there today, I'm taking a look at what we have there and where it drops down into two lanes before we get right past the fire station. Do we have any idea when that's going to be taken? Now, I know part of that's in the counties. If I'm under, we haven't incorporated that, right? Part of Hunt Highway is still in the county there?
That's correct. Especially right at the drop chute structure, that disperation pit, is it still in the county?
That's something we really need to be looking at and working on because Hunt Highway is going to be so instrumental downtown here one of these days that we need to get to take care of that as soon as we can.
Mayor, if I may add, also, I've requested staff to go and look at the entire Felix Road area that we have currently not accepted yet and what the reasons are we have not accepted it. So I know that they're working with Pulte so that we can look at the speed limit along there and also the safety reasons there at Felix Road and Hunt Highway so that we can start to accept those when we're ready as well.
Well, you know, I take a look at Felix Road and I think of Hunt Highway running north-south. But we have Felix Road as still a narrow roadway if it's going to be a main collector or whatever you want to call it. Whoever, you know, I probably did it myself, didn't catch that when we were building it. But that road should be a lot wider than what it is because if the continued growth of Florence in the northern portion grows, Felix Road to Arizona Farms is going to be very important for the commercial area of that area. And that road is just too narrow to hold a bunch of traffic. So we need to be looking at that too and working with them on that. The speed limits out there is the most ridiculous thing that this town has got in speed limits. I don't know how we can be sitting there from 35 to 45 to 50 miles an hour and it just, and we've had this discussion before, people are getting stopped by the police department out there, given citation, and they don't know what speed limit to go by. Because, I mean, they're different. I mean, you have to keep your foot on the brake and it's crazy, but that needs to be changed and changed in a hurry. I've had so many complaints on that. It's one of the, I've had a lot of complaints on it. Any other questions?
On that property, on that Pulte property faces Felix Road, are they going to have an entrance from that, from Felix into that subdivision?
I believe they are. I believe they are looking at the road on the west side coming onto Felix Road. And I don't know when that's going to occur, but I know they've already graded for it and there's signs right there, not, you know, open yet. But I believe that's the case.
Yep.
My understanding was on that speed limit thing, doesn't Pulte still, don't they still control that road? It's their deal. I mean, because when we discussed it, I think that's what's holding it up, is the Pulte.
I agree with you, but it's still ridiculous.
Oh, no, I agree. I just, but I think it's, I was told anyway that the town can't change it.
Yeah, well, the other thing they said, because of all the construction vehicles are going to be entering that, and I've been out there quite a bit and I haven't seen a lot of construction vehicles using that at this time. Anything else? We need a motion to adopt the resolution correctly, Lisa?
Just in two parts.
Okay, wait. We've got to join, got to open the public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on... Does anybody have anything to say? I know you guys have come out of Phoenix. Do you have anything you want to say? Ain't that something when an attorney doesn't want to say anything? Or a money man? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
No, we need to adopt the resolution first, correctly, Lisa?
Correct.
Okay.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number MRCFD2225-13.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution MRCFD2225-13. Any other discussion? You going to have any trouble selling the bonds? Mark?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Mark Reader with Stifel Nicolaus. There, you know, there's been a lot of development progress in Merrill Ranch, a lot of success out there, increased valuations, a lot of positive developments. And so I think the transaction is fairly small, about $1.8 million. We're going to sell the bonds over, you know, really the 25-year period. But I think we're going to have a fair amount of demand for the bonds. And to answer your question, we don't anticipate having any problems selling the bonds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cofiso, everything is legit. You've read the documents?
Chairman of the board, members of the board, I have not only read the documents, I drafted them and they're in good form. And we've reviewed the other documents supplied by other council and they're likewise in good form.
Thank you. Another discussion? Okay, call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn from the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two District Board.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two District Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
At this time, we'll move on to item nine, public hearings and presentations. We will skip item A because it was advertised at six o'clock and come back to it after six o'clock and move on to item B, presentation by the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce recognizing the business of the month.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Judy Hughes and I come before you on behalf of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. In 2009, Hoyt and Carol Huckabee arrived in Florence and they walked into the Florence Chamber office with a vision to make a difference in Florence, saying, what can we do to help make Florence successful? They started a monthly historic dinner experience at the Blue Adobe Reception Center at Eighth Street and Main in Florence, known as the History Hub, and the band Hoyt and the Arizona Cowboys. Their vision and encouragement for the town of Florence inspires everyone who knows them. The Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce Business of the Month for October 2013 award is presented to the History Hub for their dedication and vision.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you so much for this opportunity to come up and express our gratitude for just being a member of this community and having this wonderful opportunity. Who would have thought four years ago, a little concept about speaking about history of Arizona and the most famous town of all this going on is our town of Florence? Thank you for the opportunity. God bless all.
And Hoyt Cowboys wear hats and white shirts of good people, right?
You got it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kat.
Item 6C, quarterly financial report presentation by Finance Director Mike Farina.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Tonight, I am pleased to present the first quarter finance report for fiscal year 2014. I believe this is the first quarterly report that's been presented in this fashion. So we're happy to present this to you. Tonight, I'm going to highlight some of what's in the finance report for the first quarter. I'll highlight the financial results of the town as of the end of the first quarter, revenues, expenditures, the funds of the town. And first off, I'd like to say about the revenues, just that some of the revenues, you'll only see a two-month or even a less than two-month representation in the finance report because of the lag of the revenues from the collections from the state. So to highlight the finance report, revenues and expenditures are on course with the budget and town finances are sound. Revenues are meeting expectations and expenditures are within budget. Funds and the funds maintain healthy fund balances. What I'm going to show you on the presentation tonight are some of what you would see in the report for revenues and expenditures. Here's our sales tax revenue. Sales tax is one of the major revenues of the town. You can see that the annual projection for revenue is $3,670,000. And this is one of the ones where there's a lag in the collections from the state. It's about a six-to-seven week lag. So as of the end of February, or as of the end of September, we've only collected one full month and then a partial month through September. You can see that we are meeting projections for that period with nearly identical numbers for the projected amount versus the current year actual. Projection through September 30th is $330,300. And that's a seasonal projection. So what we do is we'll look back at the last five years, kind of get an idea as to what the, each month, the projection would be for that month based on historical trends. And for example, in January or February, you'll start to see a bigger number because of the retail sales coming from the Christmas season. Current year actual for sales tax is $66 more than that seasonally projected amount, or $330,366. You can also see on these comparisons, the amount compared to prior year actual and the year-to-date variance for sales tax is 3% ahead of last year or $10,930. In the report, you'll also see...
Let me ask you something. You said we only got a month and a half of this quarterly report and it doesn't show anything in July.
That's because the money that we collect in July is actually June revenue and even a big portion of the August receipts that we receive from the state, they're for the prior fiscal year. So those numbers are in the June 30 report that we'll be presenting to council soon when we present the CAFRA with the audit.
Okay, thank you.
Throughout the report, there's also a graphical representation of the same information. So it shows a projected line, a fiscal year 2014 amount, and also compared to last year. Another major revenue is the transportation excise tax. The annual projection you can see is $915,000. It is also meeting projections or slightly ahead of projections. The projected amount is roughly $238,000 with a current year actual of $242,000. State shared sales tax, we received several revenues from, through state sharing. One of them is sales tax. You can see that we've budgeted $2.2 million. There is a one-month lag from the state, so you only see two months up there. What I did is I went and looked in through the detail and was able to map the amounts to the appropriate month rather than as you saw in sales tax where it just showed zero in July. Those revenues that you see for July, for example, were received in August and August were received in September. The projection through September 30th, which again only includes two months, is $355,000. And the current year actual is $350,000 for a small difference or a 1% difference in current year actual to the seasonally projected amount. That number will vary from year to year or month to month as, you know, depending on how revenues are in any particular given month. But I would say that's pretty normal to be off just slightly. Another state shared revenue income tax, that is a, pretty much a straight-line receipt. We receive the same amount. We actually even know the budgeted amount when we're preparing the budget. So that should come in right on each month and we, there is no lag. So through three months, through September 30th, the budget projected amount was $712,000 and that's exactly what we received for state shared income tax. Vehicle license tax, another shared revenue. The annual projection, $1.1 million. You can see that we are ahead of projections. And again, there's your one-month lag and projected amount of $195,000 and we're ahead of the seasonal projected amount by about $7,000. Highway user revenue, another major revenue of the town. This is in a different fund. It's in the highway user revenue fund. Annual projection is $1.6 million, again, a one-month lag. And you can see that we're, again, slightly a little lower than the seasonal projected amount for two months or $4,600.
Go back to that. I think it's important that we realize this is something that's going on all over the state on highway user money. It's being reduced almost every place in the state right now. And part of that is due to a couple of things. And we're going to have to, under through MAG and CAG, we're taking a look at it on how do we raise the revenues that we're losing for the mileage of highway we have built. When you see the reduction, there's a couple of things that are really applying to it. Is one, is your electric cars and two, your more economical vehicles are getting better gas mileage and they're not buying the gas. And the state, statewide communities and different COGS and their legislature is taking a look at having to do something with this if we're going to keep the amount of roadways we have and keep the maintenance up on them. So eventually, if this keeps going, I think we're going to be in the negative there from the rejection that we did with budget time. So we've just got to keep our minds open when we start seeing this happening, that this is part of the reason. It's people are just getting better gas mileage and are using electric cars and things like that and it takes our money down. Thank you.
Mayor, you make good points on that. And I'd just like to add that, you know, just with these reports, this is the first report. What I'll want to do is, there'll be some changes, add more analysis like what you had just given. As I become more familiar with the town budget and resources and expenditures and, you know, I'll certainly want to add analysis like the mayor had just given. So, thank you. Moving on to the general fund, we highlight the general fund in this financial report. Overall, revenues are at 18% or 17% of the, I'm sorry, with $2.2 million collected of the $12.4 million budgeted. Expenditures are at 20% of the budget expended through the first quarter of the year. Here's a detail of the general fund revenue. It's broken down by the type of revenue. We talked about sales tax. Property tax collections actually come in later in the year, December, and then again in the following year for property tax. So that's normal where that's 0%. I'd like to also highlight the building permit fee. We're at 40% of the projection and I think that's just a reflection of the construction that's going on with the building. Just estimate conservatively and then...
Thank Dan in the back for that. Pulte. Thanks, Dan.
And then overall, again, 17% of the annual projected revenue is collected and then collections are 10% higher than the previous year. Just here's a graph. It's also in the report. That shows a breakdown of the revenues of the general fund. And you can see the largest share of the general fund is state shared revenue at 50%. And then sales tax, local sales tax makes up another 18%. On the expenditure side in the general fund, you see the total budget is $13.3 million and the chart shows the breakdown by department. You can see that 20% is expended or $2.675 million. All departments are within expectations, but there are little variances where you'd expect if we're 25% through the year. You can see that some of those departments are ahead of that 25%. For example, I just talked about Town Council and it being 35%. However, that's normal because a lot of those expenditures in the Town Council budget are up front. For example, memberships and dues, you pay them at the beginning of the year. So there's a large portion of the Town Council budget that is memberships and dues. So it kind of skews it at the beginning of the year, but it'll level off and... So it kind of skews it at the beginning of the year, but it'll level off and it'll be fine. So that is an expected number, although it might jump out to you as you're looking at this representation. Many of the large increases, if you're doing, looking at the comparisons the prior year, you see some of them maybe over the prior year and you might wonder why is administration or community development 38% higher than the previous year? And a lot of that variance is explained in the report and it has to do with filled vacancies. Last year at this time, or last year during the first quarter, there may have been more vacancies that are now filled this year. Here's a different way to represent the general fund expenditures. It's broken down by general government, public safety, community development, culture and recreation, and economic development. And these are, the way expenditures are commonly reported in our comprehensive annual financial report and as far as, you know, even any governmental entity presents expenditures this way in these types of functional categories or functions. You can see that public safety represents the largest amount in our budget, 53%. That's fire and police protection. Support services include finance, information technology, human resources, and so on. Here's another way of looking at the general fund budget. It's broken down by the type of expenditure. So it takes the budget and looks at it. And this is another way that where the expenditures are presented in a comprehensive annual financial quarter or in accounting for governments. You see personal services, that's basically personnel, or it is personnel, or also known as salary and benefits. So includes all of the salaries and benefits and wages for town employees. Purchase services, on the other hand, are those that are contracted services. And then you have supplies and transfers out. So just another representation of the expenditures. Moving on through the report, you'll come across other major funds. You have your highway user revenue fund. And we talked about the revenues and on the expenditure side, you see that there's a total budget of $7,250,000, of which $4.5 million is capital project expenditures for streets, highways, roads, and street-related expenditures. You see that the amount that's expended so far is, in those capital projects, is $115,000. And the, all of the capital projects are underway. It's just the expenditures haven't, for a lot of the projects, or some of the projects have not hit the general ledger yet and are not reported, but there are encumbrances for those projects. And also, we'll be presenting a project update at the next council meeting to give you more information on the capital expenditures. Same thing with the capital improvements fund. That's, the expenditures are all capital-related and you can see about $140,000 has been expended. Most of it's for heart monitors and defibrillator replacement and then territory square work, site work in Clomar-Lomar. Utility funds, I'll just show you this. It's also talked about in the financial report. You see the revenues are basically 16% of the budgeted amount and, you know, this is, I'll just throw this out there as an example of, you know, me getting up to speed on this. And I was looking at, well, 16%, you know, 25% through the year, there's no, really no lag in these. And I was just thinking about it and I was talking to a staff member and, you know, it makes a lot of sense. It's the kind of thing that I'm going to become more aware of as I'm here. It's the winter residents and that's why it's, you know, they'll be coming in and during July, August, September, you know, the winter residents are not here and those revenues should get back to normal as they start to come back. So I just say that as an example of, you know, as I become more familiar with town and town finances, I'll be able to add that sort of analysis into these reports. And with that, I'll be here for questions.
Members of the council, I have a question. Mike?
I'd like to see a handout or maybe this included with our agenda the next time. That way we can kind of hear it before you send it to, or present it to us.
Oh, before, okay.
The other thing I'd like to see, Tommy, is the printing just a little bit bigger. I don't know if it's, you've got better eyesight or I'm just going blinder, I don't know, but it's pretty small for me to read.
Councilmember Slammair, yeah, I had asked the finance department to push their schedule up to bring this to council. However, normally, we probably wouldn't have brought this to council until November sometime. So they were rushing to kind of close the general ledger to get all the numbers in there. So the mid-year financial report will probably be six weeks after the month-end close to give them opportunities and for us to get those in your books.
But that's the other thing I was looking at is on a lot of them where we just have two months. I'd rather see the report, even if it's a month past the end of the quarter, be able to give us all the information for that past quarter. I don't know about the rest of council, but I'd like to see a quarter, a real quarter report than just partial. Hey, Mayor, anything else for Mike? Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Keep us fluid. And we don't have to have any motion on that, that was just a report, right?
Correct.
Presentation, okay.
Item D, proclamation proclaiming October 20th through the 26th, 2013, as the 12th Annual Cities and Towns Week.
Since we don't have anybody here as the mayor, I'm going to proclaim October 20th through 26th, 2013, as the 12th Annual Cities and Towns Week.
Item 9A, public hearing and recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for the location transfer of a beer and wine license to Kevin Kramer, Panal Hotel AZ1 LLC for the Holiday Inn Express Suite 240 West Highway 284 Florence, Arizona, 85132. The town of Florence did receive an application for a business license. It has been posted on the site for 20 days as required by law. There were no responses received from the public with regard to that license and at this time, we would make the recommendation that council put forth a recommendation for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control.
Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve-
Can we have any discussion on this?
We will, we'll get it on the table.
I make a motion to approve the application received by Kevin Kramer for the Panal Hotel AZ LLC for a hotel, Holiday Inn Express and Suites application for liquor license.
I'll second it. We need, we have a motion and a second to approve the application received from Kevin Palmer, Panal Hotel AZ1 LLC for Holiday Inn Express Suite, the liquor license. Just Tommy?
I'll-
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, it's open for discussion. Go ahead, Tommy.
Go ahead and start.
No, no, go ahead. We're okay.
Okay. Usually when we receive these, they come with a map that kind of discloses all of the local areas of concern. And I'm wondering, how do we get to this point where we're, where we can't have a medical facility within X amount of hundred yards from, from a school, a church, or a library, but we're right here looking at approving a liquor license right there adjoining property to the school and just probably in a very close proximity of the church?
I can tell you that the applications are filled out at the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control and when they send them to me, they give me two copies. One is an unredacted version and one is a redacted version. And that is the exact packet that we forward to you. And I understand your philosophy, sir. I'm just presenting you the material.
I understand that and I, not that I really object to this, other than if we're going to be consistent about something, I think that we really need to look at some of the decisions that we're making. We can go to Coolidge to get our alcohol.
No. Oh. The, and by the map that they presented to us, is this going to be a bar that's open all the time in there or is it just going to be for special events? What is it?
With this liquor license, it would be eligible to be open whatever operational hours they so choose. It's not a catering license, nor is it a special event license. It is a beer and wine license so that they can serve beer and wine.
Just beer and wine?
Beer and wine.
I too wonder like Tommy. I remember there used to be something in the state law about in so many feet of a school on liquor establishment. Does this comply with the state law?
I will have to go back and look up the state law and read it again and make sure that it does comply. Typically, when the map goes through the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control, their inspector looks at it prior to sending it to us.
Was the school district or any of the, there's a church in the area, were any of them notified?
Underneath the rules for liquor licenses, you do not advertise in a newspaper, nor do you provide property owners with notification. You post location.
And I think that's my only point here. I've got nothing, I've got no problem with the way that it was brought up or anything like this. I'm just wondering, where's the public concerned on this?
So you believe that liquor control knew that the adjoining property owner was a school district?
I would have to go back in and read the license and talk to the inspector.
Now, it says it, well, it says right here.
It actually says ARS 4-207 AMB state that no retailer's license shall be issued for any premises which are at the time the license application is received by the director within 300 feet, horizontal feet of a church, within 300 horizontal feet of a public or private school building with kindergarten programs or grades 1 through 12, or within 300 horizontal feet of a fenced recreational area adjacent to such school building. This above paragraph does not apply to restaurant licenses, hotel motel licenses, government licenses, or a fenced playing area of a golf course. That's on page seven.
Yeah, that's on page five, on, while in the book.
So we're still legal and-
Yeah.
I don't have an issue with that. It's just the, the concept of, of, I don't know.
I agree with you. Any other discussion?
They are two separate substances. One is still federally illegal and we're just looking at the one that's in front of us today.
That grounds for another discussion because I just read in the paper today that the federal government's telling the states, just get, about do what you want because we're not going to enforce it. So, you know, that, the, the argument for what you just said about is going away very, very fast when the federal government's saying, go ahead and do it because we're not going to do anything about it. So we need a motion. We already have a motion.
Yeah.
A second.
And we have a second. Any other discussion? We call for the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, did you open and close the public hearing, sir?
No, we didn't. Public, okay, we need, I'm going to open the public hearing. Excuse that last motion. Public hearing's closed.
Second.
And retrospect, we-
We had a previous motion on the floor from Councilmember Montano, seconded by Councilmember Hawkins.
Okay. Okay, we're going to vote on it again, I guess. Do we have to vote on it again, listen?
Yes.
Vote on it again. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries again.
Item 10, consent agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless council members or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, approval of the 2013 groundwater savings agreement with Panal County Water Augmentation Authority and Central Arizona Irrigation Draining District. Item B, approval of the July 15th, July 29th, and August 5th, 2013 Town Council Minutes. Item C, receive and file the following board and commission minutes. The March 12th, 2013 Historic District Advisory Commission Minutes, the May 15th, 2013 Library Advisory Board Minutes, and the June 6th, 2013 Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes. Mayor, members of council, that is your consent agenda.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off of the consent agenda? Any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? CNN, I'll, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Well, I've got a discussion. And going through the reports received from the staff on our boards and commissions, if you take, and I've already talked to one of the department heads about this, and I've talked to the town manager about this. Here it is in October and we're receiving reports from June. I think we need to get a little bit, I mean, we're doing things a lot faster, but, you know, you've got March, May, and June, we're receiving reports now. If, and I would suggest to the manager and his staff, most of the stuff that we're talking about, they're outdated now. And, you know, I'm just becoming aware of it. And I think that we need to have those reports, staff reports for, to their liaisons, to the different commission, boards and commissions. These minutes need to come in within a month after they happen anyway, as soon as possible. Because I had a question on the zoning and it's already been taken care of. So that would just be my suggestion to manager. I don't know if anybody else has got any problems with that or not, but I don't know if anybody can see what I'm talking about on it, but that's where I look at. Any other discussion? Here in Nunnuck, we have a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Manager report.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I do not have anything in written form. I do have an oral report for you. Reason being is things do come up at the last minute and over the last, I would say, three or four days, things seem to change drastically since we're moving so fast. First item is the fire station that is being built in Anthem. You all may recall that staff reported to you that the station would be done late March, early April. Well, it now appears it may be done as early as the end of December. So we are way ahead of schedule. So being way ahead of schedule, we're, actually, all the staff is getting together and trying to figure out how we are going to go and move forward with opening of that station. In addition, Mark Ekoff, Community Development, Chief Zick, they are working with Pulte as far as scheduling to either relocate or remove the existing trailer and the bay for the existing temporary fire station. I'm sure Pulte wants to get that property back as soon as possible so they can start building homes there. So that is something we are working on and as we get a more firm update for when that station will be completed, we'll do a grand opening and make sure you all are aware of that.
Have you thought of where you're taking the old temporary?
We have been discussing that, that we may have to locate that temporarily on the existing fire station, the new fire station site temporarily. We don't know yet. I know Mr. Ekoff's been discussing that with Pulte. We may leave it there till April if they're okay with that and then make a better determination at that point in time, prior to that time.
I think I'd hate to see that put on the new fire station as far as storage or something like that.
I'm just thinking if annexations go the way that the town's anticipating, we had discussed maybe working out something with county site there off of Adamsville and, or not Adamsville, Hunt Highway and Arizona Farms.
Yeah, we did, we have been talking. Depending on how the annexations go, we have talked to a few landowners along Arizona Farms Road that would be willing to donate property for a potential fire station up north. So that's potentially where it might go. However, I would mention to council something else. There is a, or has been, a piece of land be behind Hunt Highway to the east. It is an old shooting range that Coolidge has been operating and utilizing from time to time. It is getting very close to the houses being built by Pulte. And there was a concern of mine that having those houses back there in a shooting range would not probably be the best idea. I have asked Ms. Garcia to communicate with Coolidge. Coolidge has said that they would be amenable to transferring that location to the town of Florence. That piece of land is owned by the BLM for public safety purposes. We are now looking at mitigation of the lead that would be in there because of the firing range. And once that site, we make a determination of what the cleanup might be, the one appropriate purpose is a public works facility that would be located on that site potentially and brought to council. brought to council. So, that is one item there. A second item in association with the fire station is, the fire chief and a number of his, a few of his employees, firefighters, did fly out and go look at the new ladder truck that council approved a few months back. It will be delivered here within the next week. As we have found out, I think we kind of knew, but as, as we get closer to delivery and a new station, we kind of look at things that come up, that truck is 50 feet long. So, pulling that truck into any gas station, even the new one in town, is not going to work. So, we are potentially having to look at solutions of a above-ground fuel station. Mr. Selaya and I did talk about some options that may occur in the future. I did talk to the mayor about some things that may happen. I think these are happening sooner than later, because we're going to have to try and find solutions for these things. We are, the Chief Zick is working with some fuel companies to figure out some solutions, so we may be bringing that to council here in the very near future to figure out how to do that. And in doing that, that would mean that the town would then find a location to fuel its vehicles locally, on town property. We'd also approach the county to do the same. It would probably save around 60 to 70 cents per gallon for every vehicle, which would save the town and potentially county thousands of dollars a year. So, that's something we will need to look at. One of the other things that has come up is, we were notified today, over the last few days, that the Arizona Department of Health Services is now looking at specifically issuing individual certificate, certificates of necessity for ambulance services. They have run into some issues. There are several cities within the metro area that are going to take on the own, their own system for ambulance delivery, and we've all, myself and the fire chief have been invited to a meeting. Fire chiefs and city managers should discuss this for regional approach to it, or individual towns looking at this, but one way or another, the town of Florence will may, may have to look at ambulance delivery in the near future. So, just wanted to brief you.
Probably in the very near future.
Correct, that is correct. So, and that is all I have tonight. If you have any questions on any of those items.
Would that mean purchasing another ambulance?
That would mean potentially purchasing two, maybe three ambulances, yes.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Absolutely. In addition to that, staffing.
Why is this? Why would we have to do this? Is this something the state's telling us we have to do, or?
This is, this is some-
Southwest, I mean, what?
There are delivery, service delivery things that the state looks at, but with other cities, larger cities, taking the bulk of the service delivery, Florence would be impacted severely, because we're a small metro area, and it, the service deliveries would be impacted in the long run, so it's something we would have to look at. We are a small municipality in the middle of larger areas, so we would have to look at the service delivery and us doing it.
I'm still, maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm dense. What's, what's this, the service delivery, the, the cities are taking it? I mean, what, is Southwest going to leave here? Is that what you're saying?
They are currently in bankruptcy. They have been in bankruptcy for the last three months.
Oh, okay, well, that gives me-
Southwest.
That's what I'm trying to get at, what's going on here, really?
Southwest is a subsidiary owned by Rural Metro. They filed bankruptcy with all their operations throughout the entire United States.
Okay, well, I didn't, I wasn't familiar with that. That's what I was wondering, thank you.
We will update council and the mayor as we get additional information.
Well, that's going to be biting off of quite a chunk of money out of our budget, I would think, and a lot of liability, is my understanding why we haven't done it before, so, yeah.
Any other questions, manager? Thank you. This is a second call to the public, everything I said, and the first one sits in place.
Denise Kohler, Florence Gardens, Florence, Arizona. I just wanted to get up and thank Tommy for his comments, because I agree with him wholeheartedly. Alcohol is the biggest problem with kids, and you guys just don't blink an eye, and I, I do not have a problem with it either, like he said, but you're not being fair. Thank you.
Ruth?
I'd just like to take, I'd just like to take a minute to follow up on what the mayor said a few minutes ago about transcribing the reports or the minutes of the meetings. There are companies that will do this within a 24-hour period. They'll get the, the transcribed minutes back to you all, I think, within 24 hours. I've, I made some inquiries a while back, and, and that can be done, and that would take the work away from the staff people who probably spend an awful lot of time doing that. So, it might be something good to outsource, and I just thought I'd, I'd mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the coun, of the public? Here in, close call to the public, call to council. Tommy?
Uh, just a general thanks to staff, and, and Halloween's coming up, and everybody be safe.
Ruben?
Uh, like we had Amy Fuller here earlier, I just want to reiterate the importance of the override for the Florence Unified School District. I think it's very important we look at this. We've been through this twice before, and it's failed. We have an opportunity to help our kids out. They're struggling as far as the funds, and it's time for us to step up and, and help out the school. Thank you.
Tara?
I have three things. I wanted to say thank you to Schwabek Partners and London Company for graciously contributing their time and their funding to help with the conceptual design of the Padilla Marketplace Park at Silver King Plaza, I'm sorry. Secondly, we have our town of Florence Parks and Rec Halloween Carnival on October 31st from 6:00 to 8:30. There's going to be games, photo booths, a haunted house, activities, pumpkin carving. Please join us for a safety evening with the kids. And lastly, I just wanted to comment on Amy Fuller coming to speak to us, and the success of a town can be measured in the education of the children. The success of our schools will directly affect the projections of home values and the economic worth of the town. It's a fact that successful schools draw families, families draw businesses, and businesses create opportunities. Thank you.
Bill?
I think most of it's been covered.
Gary?
I'll just say ditto to Ruben's comments, so as not to be redundant.
Tom? The only thing I've got, Ray, normally, you guys are giving out candy over there at the park, right? For Halloween? Do you need donations of that?
Thanks for bringing that up, Vice Mayor Smith, members of the council. We are actively handing out sponsorship packets to a lot of the local businesses, and we've mailed out quite a few, and to this date, we have had some generous donations alongside of the amount of candy and stuff we normally buy through our budget.
Good, okay. The only thing I'd like to say is I send my condolences out to the DeArmond family. They tragically lost their grandson, and the grandfather, Bobby Armond, used to be the justice of peace here in Florence for many, many years, passed away yesterday. Just so our condolences go out to a former elected official of the community. And with that, meeting adjourned. Need a motion? Second it?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Have a motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.